...to come before the Commissioner.
Yes, Mr. President.
Mr. Commissioner.
The County Commissioner's Association Metropolitan and Regional Affairs Committee did meet earlier this week. Right at the top of the discussion was jail funding, heavy emphasis on mental health and addiction services. There is a strong recognition that the 11 most populous counties in the state are bearing a disproportionately high level of costs. And that candidly, counties that have neglected their facilities, do not have community support, and are operating under some less than optimal conditions, are financially being rewarded for their lack of effort. Whereas, the rest of us are working hard to facilitate, move forward, and to care for the needs of our community by maintaining our justice system in the most effective manner possible. Another topic that they discussed was youth crime. Something I think we can all agree on: intervene, break the cycle. Property taxes. The 20-mill floor was brought up, and there was an emphasis suggested that we need to make sure there's an education of elected officials, that when that 20-mill floor is reached, the taxes are looked at as inside millage. They go up without a vote of the people. And people are agreeing to these levies, not knowing that that camp is actually artificial. This legislation dates back, I believe, to 1976. Overwhelmingly, most elected officials do not know this. So, CCAO will be taking that up. Again, an ongoing topic of discussion is indigenous defense and the request to restore that. Lake County, we've again taken very seriously our public defender's office in support of that, just as much as we've taken support of our prosecutor's office. Again, justice is very important. There is a challenge where this has continued to be rolled back. County Commissioners Association's position continues to be, it is state versus, not county versus. Counties are being, this is one of my phrases, counties are being asked to pay twice, once for the original crime, and twice paying for the punishment of that crime. Those dollars should be coming from the state. Yes, they are the people's money, but that money should be returned back to the people who are being victimized. Another topic of discussion had to do with rehabilitating the housing stock and affordable housing. It's more than just a slogan, it's real. We've been very fortunate. I'm a former mayor over here, worked on the better flip back in the day, trying to do something innovative and make things work. Another topic was also children's services. Turns back to the youth crime concern. Again, here in Lake County, we've been very supportive of our children's services, but that's not so much the case elsewhere in the state. And there is a real recognition that if we lose our kids, we've lost our future. Mr. Reg, if you want to add anything to that, sir, I know you were also on that meeting. But thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Commissioner. Any further new business?
Mr. President, just adding a little bit. To kind of tell the people with CCAO, it's kind of obvious to the state what the concerns we have as the 11 most populous counties in the state. And those are, a lot of those issues have been on forever, it seems like. But I think there's a real push for jail funding, since we got cut out of the last budget this past year at the last minute. So, a lot of people are, and this is what we're feeling, because a lot of the counties are dealing with our Cuyahoga, our major cities, Youngstown, Franklin, and those kind of places, that are, they're seeing more homeless, they're seeing families of the homeless. And we're looking for, we're looking for direction that changes. So, one thing that everyone agreed on was the getting back to the auditors and property tax, what can we do about that? So, we will have another meeting before we meet in December, and using, December is when we put that forward out of committee in front of the whole board. So, just kind of give everybody a little bit of what we do in an action plan here.
Mr. President, if I may?
Mr. Commissioner.
Mr. Reg, that raises an excellent point that I think should be defined. The funding that we got cut out of was no less than $50 million. Fifty million. There was an effort, being led by our own Jamie Callender, with the support of the Speaker of the House, to provide 25% of the total project cost. At that time, we were talking about 200 million. That's where the $50 million comes from. There was a lot of politics that came into play that cost us that $50 million. So, that was a pretty big hit to the bottom line. So, I thought that was something that should also be entered into the discussion. Thank you, Mr. Reg, for opening that door. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. The only thing that I would add is, we continue to hear from countless residents about their grave concern on the increase in property values and ultimate increase in property taxes. It's not an exaggeration to say that seniors are being taxed out of their homes, and while some can manage and some can afford it, many can't. And even for those who can afford it, it's a great burden. It's so important, therefore, that we understand who is truly in charge of our property tax system in Ohio, so that we can hold those folks accountable and ask them to help. Because so often, we knock on the door of the county auditor, and we talk about the auditor in this process, because their office is given the important, but still ministerial task of applying the formula that's set by state law. There is an incidence of an auditor who refused to increase values pursuant to state law. That auditor will go nameless, but in a fiasco that involves everything from criminal charges to controversy, ultimately, the state overrode the auditor. So, we know the answer. Even if Auditor Galloway were to boldly say, "I refuse to increase property values. This is injustice," it would be a bold stand, but the state would ride over him like a Sherman tank. Ultimately, the property tax formula is set by state law in the Ohio Vice Code. And like any state law, that is the ambit and the jurisdiction of our state representatives and state senators. And we have two state representatives that represent Lake County. We have one state senator at this time. As the lines continue to change, that changes too, but we have our representatives to reach out to. I know that many of you in this audience have done so and continue to do so. But if you're concerned with how properties are valued, that's state law, and only a change in state law can fix that problem. I've personally called for a 100% property tax exemption for seniors, anyone over the age of 65. I've done so not only in debates and forums, I've done so in an op-ed in the Columbus Dispatch. I've done everything that I can to make my very small and unimportant opinion known, but it's our state reps and state senators who have that authority to change the law. As long as the law remains the same, the other formula, the other part of this formula is the tax rate. Every tax system has two essential features: tax rate and tax base. State law sets the formula for the tax base, your property value. The vast majority of the rate is set by our local school boards, that collect between 60 and 70-some percent of your property taxes every year. Now, our schools are important. This is not a critique of our school districts, we all acknowledge that, but they're the ones who are in charge of setting the rate for the vast majority of property tax collected. So, ultimately, there are two types of elected officials that we can reach out to as citizens if we want to make a change. We can talk to our state reps and state senators about how to value property. We can talk to our school board members about whether the rates are too high or there should be a cutback. But as long as we misdirect our attention at the tax collector, the county treasurer, or the person who applies the state formula, subject to the state supervision, the county auditor, those two can agree with you 110%. And I believe that Mike Zeran and Chris Galloway both agree that property taxes are too high, but they don't have the authority to change the system. So, we can knock on their door, and we can argue, and we can ask for change from them, and they can agree. And I believe that they sincerely do agree. But ultimately, if we want to change the way our properties are valued, we need to talk to our state reps and state senators. And if we want to talk about the rates, we're going to have to look to our school board members to see if they can run their budgets more efficiently. Thank you.
It's important to discuss taxing authorities. For example, we are a taxing authority. We have control over the inside millage. We have continued to hold in suspension 1.1 mill. But we also have the authority to say, "No, we're not going to accept the $1.8 million increase that's going to be coming because of the reevaluation, because we are still collecting 1.0 mill." We could lead by example. I've said it before, I'll say it again, we could also work with the taxing authorities at school boards. Anyone who has a levy that's being treated or has inside millage, that can be throttled back, it can be rolled back. We have a Lake Train board member in attendance, who led the charge, took up the cause of saying, "We can have a surplus of funds at Lake Train." So, rather than finding ways to spend it, let's just stop collecting it, spend this surplus down wisely. There are opportunities to defray costs, to redirect, and to give genuine relief. Now, some may say, depending upon your asset class, be it residential, commercial, industrial, it may be de minimis in nature. But I remember getting beaten about the head and face over a half a penny. Half a penny. $1.8 million is a lot of money. The reality is, we do have the authority to roll that back. And if we want to make a stand, if we want to be genuine, we have the ability to do that. So, I would say, why don't we consider rolling back and saying, "No, we're not going to accept that $1.8 million"? Just want to get that back out into the conversation. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Commissioner. You're reminding me of a very significant news interview between yourself and Councilman Ray Kirchner of Mentor, when you said, "It's pennies, it's half a cent," with respect to the proposed sales tax increase. And Councilman Kirchner, on behalf of Mentor, responded, "It's millions of dollars." I do think we have to put numbers in perspective. Whereas, the school board collects 60 to 70%, depending on your district, of the total property taxes, the county's entire portion is less than 1.5%, which is considerably less than the increase that the average resident is going to sustain from this revaluation alone. So, even if Lake County disappeared, even if we no longer existed as a taxing authority, the average resident wouldn't even notice the blip on their bill. I would also note that the half a cent we're referring to from the proposed sales tax increase, and I say this with highest respect, because I understand that tax policy is difficult, and there are trade-offs and choices that have to be made, and there are no perfect solutions, but there was an estimated increase of $22 million per year, something that you said was absolutely necessary for Lake County's budget in order to build the jail. I find it hard to believe that someone who advocated in early 2023 and late 2022 for a $22 million tax increase, the biggest tax increase in Lake County history, would turn around and say that we have room to collect less than, less than half of the property taxes that we're able to. And I've heard from folks who've said, "Can't we be more like Giaga?" And I said, "You don't want to be in this respect, because Giaga does not voluntarily suspend collection of more than half their property taxes every year." If we were to follow the same policy as Giaga to ignore the small increase due to the inflated values, but collect the full 2.1 mills, that would be a very different story, and everyone's taxes would go up. Although, the irony is, people wouldn't have noticed, by and large, because the county is such a small portion. The people who are crying out for relief want actual relief. They don't want to see their property taxes go up after politicians issue a press release about how they led the way. They want to see their property taxes actually go down. And while I think it's appropriate to debate all these different aspects of different taxes, tax bases, and rates, it's also critically important that we're honest about what we can and can't do. If Lake County abolished itself and we ceased to exist, less than 1.5% of your property tax bill goes away. Realistically, everyone's taxes will still go up dramatically. We, as commissioners, do not have the direct authority to impact this. We do have the bully pulpit. And I will say, at the beginning of the year, I called on my colleagues, I proposed a resolution, it didn't get any interest, to ask the state legislature to take action. I understand, we're not state reps and senators, we don't have that power. I think that perhaps people didn't realize what a huge issue this was going to be. I would call again. I think we should have a formal resolution from this board, calling on our representatives to come together this year and do something now. Republicans, Democrats, on this issue, no one cares. We want action. We want to have our property tax system reformed, not 20 years from now, not 100 years from now, by the end of the year, because people are going to have to start paying these bills next year. So, there is a real sense of urgency here. If we really want to make a change, we have to be consistent. We can't propose to raise taxes by $22 million and cut them by less than two. We have to use the power we actually do have, the bully pulpit, to reach out to our reps and senators and our school board members and ask them to do better for the public. Respectfully, as partners, not critiquing, not throwing people under the bus, but acknowledging, just as we have jurisdiction over building a jail, you have jurisdiction over the property taxes. So, I understand being a public official is a hard job, and people get a lot of criticism for the decisions they make and the work they do. And none of us are perfect. I've made my fair share of mistakes. We all have. But we're doing our best, I sincerely believe that. And I would sincerely ask that we consider making a statement, finding one that all three of us can agree on, to ask our state legislature to do something to help our seniors, to help people on a fixed income, and reform property taxes now. And I'm not talking about throwing people a bone, where a handful of people get a 1% or 2% off their property tax bill. There needs to be real change. We need to consider solutions such as Mayor Maher suggested, that you can't raise values until there's a sale. That's an unrealized, unrealized gain tax. You know, we hear about presidential candidates banding this about. We have that on the local level, and I agree, it's not fair. If you're living in your home, you don't get the benefit of this supposed property value increase, even if it's real, until you sell it. We should be having those more serious conversations now. And I wish I had the power, that the three of us could just vote and say, "Everyone's property taxes are cut in half." If I have that power, Mr. Hackman, let me know, because I'll be the first to make that motion. But I'm fairly certain that in the humble role of commissioner, I can't do that. But I can't ask our representatives to hear the cry of thousands and thousands and millions of Ohioans who cannot afford these tax increases. Thank you.
Mr. President, if I may, continue with the conversation?
Mr. Commissioner.
So, again, I appreciate your sentiments, and obviously, in the interest of, as we often talk, openness, transparency, but I also believe completeness is important. We do appoint the Lake Train Board, for example. They are the taxing authority, but we're the authority that appoints the taxing authority. The majority of them were wisely voted to suspend the collection of half a percent, or a quarter percent. So, let's do the math. I was in support of our justice system. That amount was reduced effectively, because we need to talk about effective collections. I have. I was a strong advocate of taking the county's inside millage to zero. And I had consistently stood with our prosecutor and our sheriff on the simple, undeniable fact that 46% of the criminals that are draining resources from Lake County are non-Lake County residents. And a sales tax is the only way to not punish the people of Lake County twice, by being victims of crime and then having to pay for it. You might have heard me say that during the CCAO report. The reality is, it would have netted out to zero, and it would have been capturing dollars that are non-Lake County residents. It's that simple? Gestures, claims, proclamations of do this or that, they're hollow words. We have the authority, as a taxing authority, to make real and substantial changes. We also can lead by example, by working with the other elected officials in Lake County to set example. How would that look to our legislators if we could rally the elected officials in Lake County to say, "No more"? We would have an impact statewide. That would be real, that would be substantial. Leaders lead from the front, they don't lead through press releases. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Commissioner. But I would once again point out, in fairness, that no one made a motion, no one voted at any time to cut taxes. To say you were in support of reducing the real estate tax to zero when you vote to raise sales taxes to the third highest in the state of Ohio, but you have no proposal other than words about your feelings on property taxes, I think, in fairness, Mr. Commissioner, there are those who would question your commitment to action. And I would say that a temporary sales tax reduction for one year is not equivalent to a permanent sales tax increase that is twice the size. So, in fairness, if we're to look at actions rather than words, if we're to disregard press releases and public statements and focus on what was actually done and voted on, the record shows that there was a push for the largest tax increase in Lake County history. And to say that people outside the county are going to pay sales taxes, when the largest retail center in Lake County, the city of Mentor, condemned the proposed sales tax increase, because they feared that it would drastically reduce the retail sector? Who is going to drag to Lake County to pay higher sales taxes? Every county other than Cuyahoga that borders us would have a lower tax rate. The city of Mentor itself said it would suffer greatly from that tax increase. The reality is, we can talk the talk, everyone here is very eloquent and very wise, but actions speak louder than words. George Washington said, "Deeds, not words." And there was only one, only one vote taken with respect to taxation, and it had nothing to do with cutting taxes. It is leading from the front to tell residents, "Here are the decision-makers." When folks are confused and they're misdirecting, they're iron to people who can't help them, you are leading from the front when you say, "Here are the decision-makers, here's what we need them to do, and let's take the lead and ask them first," so that residents know they're supported. That is leading from the front. But we can't say that we've raised more sales taxes from out-of-county people when the experts, the folks that actually are bringing in the retail and the customers in Mentor, say, "No, that won't work." I think that would be rather arrogant for one county commissioner to say, "I know better than the retail sector of my county and its largest city." I would be very concerned with ignoring our retail sector in terms of how we're going to raise retail sales.
I appreciate your passion, but I do believe we do need to make a few corrections. The Lake Train suspending the collection, somehow, there's this recrafting of the language. It was to be suspended and revisited in a year to see if they needed to reinstate it. It was not a one-year suspension. It seems to be being misreported, and there's this drive by some that's really concerning to me, because there have been some, there's been some turnover of the leaders on the Lake Train Board, that if this starts to take root, that's going to come right back. And to use your own example, if this is going to be devastating to the economy that day, the tax coming back, but I think it's very important to point out, the Lake Train Board voted to suspend the quarter percent because they had the funds in their possession to be able to operate effectively, without any compromise to staff, services, nothing. The one year was a look back to say, "Do we need to reinstate it? Yes or no?" It wasn't, it's going to automatically come back. But there seems to be this drive to recraft this. And again, we've got a board member sitting here, and if I'm saying anything wrong, sir, please correct me, but I'm aware that Mr. Massey, myself, we had attended meetings, spoke directly to the board in public. So, I am speaking from firsthand. The notion, and again, I'm taking you at your word, that we can do the things that we're going to do. A lot of our funding is based on excessive amounts of money being invested. Why are these excess dollars there? Because these dollars are accumulating, not in terms of millions, not in terms of tens of millions, but in terms of hundreds of millions of dollars. I know the legislature is looking at some language that would give some teeth to the budget commission, give them the ability to say, "Too much. Roll it back. Suspend this portion of a tax collection." That will directly impact the general fund, because if those dollars are not available for investment, those interest dollars will not be there. But know this, high interest rates will not be there forever. So, now you're looking at the perfect storm coming, where fund balances are being reduced to responsible management of tax dollars and lower interest rates. We very likely will get back to the traditional $1 to $3 million in interest, rather than the large amounts that we're receiving now that are a one-time aberration. I get that, I appreciate that. But the reality is, if the claim is true, that we could function on the funds available, then we should be able to afford foregoing an unvoted $1.8 million because of these reevaluations. We, again, lead from the front. If you're going to ask somebody to make a sacrifice, we need to make that sacrifice ourselves.
Mr. Commissioner, I have to say, you're making two completely polar opposite arguments. On the one hand, you express skepticism that we can pay for the jail without raising taxes, and in fact, voted to raise our taxes, proposed raising our taxes, the biggest tax increase in Lake County history, over $22 million a year. And on the other hand, you say, "We can afford to cut taxes." I have to say, those two arguments are not compatible, sir.
I would agree, and I'm quoting you.
You are not quoting me, sir.
You are the one who said we could do this with existing revenues. It cost us $50 million, that stuff. Why would the state put $50 million into Lake County when Lake County officials are boasting that we don't need the money? That is the cold reality. That propaganda cost us $50 million. I had broken my back working with Jamie Callender, and I know that Jerry Serino is going to get blamed for this, but Jerry Serino, our senator, was working very hard, and he was being beaten up by his colleagues of, "Why are we giving this kind of money to Lake County when they say they don't need it?" This propaganda cost us $50 million, sir.
Mr. Commissioner, all I can say is, on behalf of taxpayers, the propaganda I'm hearing is, there's always an excuse to raise taxes. As outlandish as the excuse may be, "I'll get more money from the state, I'll do this, I'll do that," there's always an excuse to raise taxes. Somehow, big government always finds a way to get bigger. I agree with Commissioner Young. Big government wants to grow, and they will always have a reason for why you have to raise taxes. There's always, "Oh, this is a special case, please raise the taxes now." No. I'm proud that if I'm known by many names, I'm at least known by one name, Commissioner No, because I told you no, I told the government no, and I will always vote no on any tax increase. I don't care what excuse you have. I'll get a billion dollars from Columbus, we'll get a new nuclear power plant and flying cars. I'm not voting to raise taxes. That's my promise, that's my guarantee. And some have said, "You'll die on that hill." I say, "I will rest in peace, and I will go to heaven, because I'll be the one elected official who keeps their word and doesn't vote to raise their neighbor's taxes." With that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion.
Second, sir. Madam Clark.
Commissioner Hammerchek.
Yes.
Commissioner Ravitch.
Yes.
Commissioner Pudge.
Yes.